Well, hello, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. And for tonight's meeting, we'll start with an invocation which we observed by a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Next up is the roll call. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Bajin.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present. Thank you. And now we have the council meeting minutes from the work session and regular evening meeting of June 8, 2021 for approval.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the city council minutes of the work session and regular evening meeting of June 8, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. The next, item five, is special business. This is Resolution 26421. This is an extension of the public health order under which we've been for the last 30 days because they have to be re-upped every 30 days.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of Resolution 26421.
Second.
A resolution ratifying public health emergency order 2017A.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Right, clerk, will you call the roll? Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And next up, the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. But we know separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen still requests, in which case the item will be pulled from the general order business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Can I interject real quick?
Yes.
I thought that we were pulling RES 2259-21 for discussion in a separate vote.
Thank you for doing that. I didn't think that I could. I was going to ask if we could have some discussion. So, yeah, why don't we pull that 25921? And so the motion will be, if the maker is okay with that one pulled.
As presented, with the removal of 25921.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you call the roll? Bajin. Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson. Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Okay, and the remaining item is, excuse me, Resolution 25921, which is a resolution adopting the climate action roadmap and our city's goals of carbon neutrality as a municipal government by 2035 and citywide by 2050. Do we want a motion before we have discussion? Do we need that?
Sure. Madam Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 25921.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We're as open for discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Well, having been here when we first started making actions that began to lead toward this climate action plan, this is a culmination of a long time coming. And, you know, you look back at the history of the city of Boise, the 20 Mile South Farm was purchased four decades ago so that the city could begin land applying bio solids from the water renewal facility, was the first of its kind in the state of Idaho and still remains, I think, a leader in that. The city went on to take many other actions, including declaring that facilities built for the city would first strive for and then were required to meet lead or other energy efficiency standards. The city has consistently led in adopting amendments to the energy code that put us on the leading edge of the regulations so that we weren't continuing to build buildings that continued to contribute to unnecessary energy use. About 15 years ago, and then more potently about 10 years ago, the city really embarked on an effort to decide how to address climate in a big way through energy, especially. And Mayor McLean, as a city council member at that point, was one of the leaders in that effort. Other council members were also very supportive. And I am so excited tonight that we get to adopt this resolution that memorializes the climate action plan and begins the action to do even more for energy efficiency and climate resiliency for the city of Boise and wholeheartedly support this action plan and look forward to the implementation steps that we'll begin to take.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Additional comments from me, much along the lines of the council president, with the added observation that there's a real difference between a bunch of words in a government declaration about what energy efficiency should be or what climate goals should be and an actual roadmap and an actual plan. And the difference is that the second one is tangible and real. Here, there's been a tremendous amount of work by city staff in the documents that are being implemented here, and it goes a lot deeper than the, you know, the sort of multi-point highlights in the roadmap. It is, it is a detailed plan with attainable goals. Some of them will be difficult, involve a lot of hard work, but they're attainable. They're in order, they're logical, and it can be done. And so that's why I'm excited to vote yes on this resolution. It is, it's not just a declaration of a wish list, it's an actual plan that we will begin to execute and we will see success in. So I'm very excited about that.
Madam Mayor. One of the things, when I came onto city council, I think that most impressed me in my orientation was our Public Works Department and their commitment to really moving us forward as a city on many environmental fronts. And so I think that this is just kind of the latest iteration of what that is, which is really, I mean, it's, it speaks to a department that is completely dedicated to making sure that we have a sustainable future. It's our very professional environmental staff and a culmination of a lot of hard work into a plan that's going to deliver exactly what council member Bajin, who has just described, and the commitments that are, have a lot of history and that are ongoing that Council President Clegg described. So it's very, it's very gratifying to be able to vote for this and then see the fruits of everyone's hard work for many years to come. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, I remember before I was elected, I was out in the audience and you all were hearing about a clean energy goal by 2040 goal. And during the course of the hearing, it got down to 2035. There was enough public testimony, enough people saying that they wanted to be part of the effort to make us confident that we could actually decrease the amount of years that we could achieve these goals shortly after Idaho Power made an announcement as well. But it was so impactful for me and the audience, knowing that voices made a difference and that with community involvement, we could address these big challenges and maybe even hit dates sooner than we were wanting to. And so I think the thing that I'm excited about this climate action roadmap is that we have the ability to hit some of these goals sooner if people jump in and get on board. And I see this as a great opportunity for other folks, whether those are organizations or individuals to say, yes, we love what you're doing and we want to be a part of it. So I think it's very exciting.
Madam Mayor, thank you equally. I'm very excited about this. I see this as us, the city of Boise, the capital city of Idaho, doing their part to save the planet. And this is a group effort worldwide, I would hope, and I hope this sets a standard for other cities to follow. I think in many regards, my almost 12 years here, we've, we've done things at times that have been modeled after being achieved here and seeing success across the state. And I hope this does the same. It certainly, it certainly sets us in the right trajectory for going forward. Thank you for your efforts.
Madam Mayor, thank you. When I was running for city council in 2017, I had an opportunity to meet with then-council pro tem McLean. And I didn't know what the results of my election would be, but it did provide me an opportunity to learn about who helped to create some of the resources that we have in our city that many of us take for granted because we don't know the history behind it. And through that study and research and learning about my city, I learned how important our mayor was in protecting our open space that would then be made available to me to use. And that began the work of just recognizing what it takes to create our city and all that we enjoy in it. And I began to learn more and more about conservation issues. And I did not realize that one of my personal heroes, the Lotus Huerta, who is often thought of as an icon for the United Farm Workers Union. Some of you may know Cesar Chavez. He's more commonly known as a Mexican-American farm worker advocate. But the Lotus was this right-hand woman, and they created this union together. And one of the things that the Lotus and Cesar worked on was protecting farm workers from pesticides. They were treated like animals. They were not provided with potable water, a place where they could go relieve themselves, and there was no care taken in the fact that, that they were sprayed with pesticides. And if, if being sprayed with pesticides was harmful for a human being working in the fields, it certainly would be harmful for a human being ingesting those foods. And so I've been able to make all these connections of how sometimes when we think of conservation, that we think of it in a very narrow way, whether we think of that as, as solar panels, clean water, it's all of those things. And for me, what resonates is the fact that, were it not for the efforts of Cesar and the Lotus all those years ago, I might not be here. You know, last year, there was a lot of death connected to COVID. In my life, there was a lot of death connected to cancer. And these were friends of mine who were my age who died from cancer, and they grew up working in the fields of Idaho and Texas and Arizona. And so for me, these conservation efforts, they have a very direct imprint on my life. I recognize what these efforts mean. They mean that people can have a long life. So it's not just about saving our planet for all of us. But in some cases, depending on where you fall on the socioeconomic ladder, it could mean whether or not you have a long life. I have friends who have not seen 55 because as children, they worked in the fields. So, like I said, I've had to come to this understanding about conservation and, and energy use and think of it in very personal terms about the people that we're conserving as well and that we're protecting. So I am very honored to support this resolution, and I thank our mayor for her work in this area. And I am very honored to be able to be in support of this.
Well, before I call for vote, I'd love to say a couple of things. First off, you know, I was lucky enough to be involved in the Foothills Levy efforts 20 years ago, but that was made possible on the shoulders of people like the council president and so many committee members that had laid the stages, laid the groundwork, and had the plan that we could then act on. And that was really and truly possible because so many Boiseans stood up and said, we won't want to impact our community because preserving our open spaces, protecting our clean air, clean water is about the way we live, the future that we'll have, and the place that we love. And we will be able to accomplish these goals in this plan in the very same way. We need citizen action, citizen partnership with us to do these things. There's simple things like planting a tree is part of the plan as well as, you know, increasing the miles traveled by bikes to address some of that. It's from a city. So those are citizen actions that you can take tomorrow while we're waiting for more. And this does call for us to take bold and quick action on electrification of our fleet, beneficial electrification of our buildings, investigating and trying new things when it comes to technology to meet our energy goals. And all of this isn't just, it's not just an environmental or conservation issue, it's a people issue. It always has been for me, it always has been for this community. If we want to thrive in the long run, we have to do everything we can to set ourselves up for success. And that means that in these challenging times, we come up with goals and a roadmap to make it possible to meet with really hard work that will affect our affordability from an energy and water perspective. And that's good for people that live here now that'll live here in the future and our pocket bucks in the long run. The innovation that we have to see in this city and in this community and the partnerships that are required to meet these goals will create new jobs. And those jobs will be well-paying jobs. It'll be here for our kids and grandkids. It'll be the foundation of a future economy. We'll see better health outcomes, and we want to make sure that those that have been most impacted by hotter days, health impacts of smoke, other climate impacts, see the benefits. And that's where it gets back to people and pocketbooks in terms of long-term savings. And also, it builds on the legacy that we have as a city of preserving our open spaces and clean water and river habitat. And so all of that together with other action and importantly, partnership from the business community that can help us innovate and create those jobs from our residents that can take action and push us to do more. And the incredible team at Public Works that has worked so hard to make this vision achievable by mapping out what it is we have to do. And then they'll keep us on task in terms of getting it done alongside the public that will really keep us on task because they want us to lead. Because it's in this leadership that our community and our region and our state ultimately as leaders in this space will do best by our people for the future. And I really, really appreciate the leadership and partnership of council members that have also made this possible. Because without sharing the values and expecting the leadership and then asking for the plan, we wouldn't be where we're at today. So thank you all very much. And really look forward to the really hard but fun steps ahead because in all these challenges, there are incredible opportunities to benefit the lives of the people that live here. Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. We are going to move now, and thank you, team at Public Works, the Steves. And we are going to move into ordinances. There's nothing on first reading, but we have three on second reading.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move that, or I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection. ORD-28-21, an ordinance CAR 21-00003, for property located at 5454 through 5490 West Grover Street. Amending any classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in section one of this ordinance from R-1C, single-family residential urban, to R-2D, medium-density residential with design review overlay, setting forth a reason statement in support of such change and providing effective date. ORD-30-21, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Geothermo System Regulations 10-3-2 to update definitions. Amending Boise City Code Geothermo System Regulations to remove reference to natural gas prices and amended Title 10, Chapter 3 for general corrections, approving the summary of the ordinance, providing effective date. ORD-31-21, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title 10, Chapter 1 Irrigation System Regulations, approving the summary of the ordinance and providing effective date. Thank you. There's nothing on third reading, but we do have one ordinance. I'm seeking a first, second, and third reading.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I move that all rules of the council interfering with the immediate consideration of ORD 3221 be suspended and that the portions of Idaho Code Section 5902 requiring an ordinance to be read on three different days, twice by title and once in full, be dispensed with and that the council hold the first, second, and third readings tonight and that the records show that ORD 3221 has been read for the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-32-21, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title 1, Chapter 16, Section 3, providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing effective date.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that ORD 3221 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. We're going to move into subdivisions now. Is anybody here in the room here for any of the subdivisions? Three of you? No, four of you. Great. All right. So what we're going to do is we'll go through these. And first, staff will give their presentation, and then I'll ask if council members have questions for staff because then the applicant is able to either respond to those questions, let us know if you agree with the terms and conditions of the staff report, and we can move on from there. At this point, nobody has signed up in advance online. So if somebody is here needing to testify, then let us know. But otherwise, I expect that these will be fairly routine this evening. Go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of nine buildable and one common lot on .72 acres located at 3205 West Moore Street in R2 Zone. At the May 3 Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, several neighbors testified in opposition to the project and their concerns focused on traffic compatibility issues and density. However, at this hearing, the commission unanimously approved the planning and development comprised of nine townhomes and several variances. The PUD and the variance were not appealed and, and are not before the city council tonight. The site is bordered by a residential neighborhood containing single-family homes, duplexes, and apartments to the north, south, and east, and to the west across Whitewater Park Boulevard, Estes and Plot Park. The project is a quarter mile from a designated community activity center located at the intersection of State and Whitewater Park. And this is the preliminary plat. The subdivision layout, as noted, is comprised of nine billable, one common lot. The subdivision design is intended for townhouse development. And the buildable lots are approximately 1,161 square feet in size with reduced lot sizes down to 22 feet. The project will take access from a 30-foot-wide section of Moore Street, and the section right away will be improved with a 20-foot-wide access drive, five-foot-wide attached sidewalk on the southwest. In addition, a five-foot-wide sidewalk will extend through the property along the interior service drive. The sidewalk provides pedestrian connection from Whitewater Park to Moore Street and the associated neighborhood. Access to Whitewater Park Boulevard will be limited to emergency access only. The project service drive is stubbed to the east, anticipating that 32nd Street will be extended through the adjacent property to Whitewater Park Boulevard in the future. In conclusion, the planning team recommends, or the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that city council approve the preliminary plat. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
David, thanks for the presentation. So I had a couple of questions. This property is adjacent to some other property.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I thought I hit it, but apparently I didn't quite get it. Sorry. Thanks, David. The questions I have are that this property is adjacent to some property that has existing entitlements for residential development. And I wondered about cross-access into that development.
Madam Mayor, council member Clegg, the, I believe you're talking about the development 15-inch apartment complex. We looked at trying to get cross-access to them, but the site design bends their service drive right before it hits the north corner of their, of their site or just after. So it would be difficult to get existing cross-access through there. And I don't believe their drive actually stubs up against the northwest property boundary either. While I was looking at that site design for that apartment complex before the hearing, they do have a pedestrian pathway that extends down that property line and goes to Whitewater on the adjacent property. We could get cross-access through that.
Okay, so to clarify, the service drive does show that it ends up right on the property line, but
just.
they're not required to provide access to the, to the property next door?
When I was reviewing the site design, it, I didn't see how that was going to work without additional variances from them because they would have to put their service drive right against that, that north property line right here to get access, unless their design had changed from the last time I saw it for the adjacent apartments.
Thank you. So I wonder, would it be advisable to add a condition since that property hasn't developed yet and it is possible that it will be redesigned to add a condition that if cross-access can be achieved, that, that, you know, that it's not required because we don't know if it can be achieved, but that if it can be achieved, it will be. that, you know, that it's not required because we don't know if it can be achieved, but that if it can be achieved, it, it will be um, that, that we're asking this developer to provide it.
Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council, that is a, that's, that is definitely a, a condition that could be added and would provide that, that additional cross-access.
Okay. And then um, the other question I had was um, at the northern edge of the property. Sorry, I'm struggling with my computer tonight for some reason. The um, sidewalk on Moore Street is attached. And then there's trees behind the sidewalk uh, next to the building. And I know that there's not a lot of traffic on the end of the street. I get that. But you set the stage for the sidewalk to be attached the entire length when you do that. So I'm wondering, wondering why the attached sidewalk there.
Um, planning team considered uh, providing, maybe getting detached sidewalks on this unsec- unimproved section of Moore Street, but it's only thirty-three, thirty feet wide currently. Um, it's not a full, full um, street width. And it's already pretty tight to um, to get access or to get that type of detached in there. Or at least that was the planning team's consideration when we looked at that.
Okay. Um, again, is a possibility of a condition that um, although that this sidewalk may be attached, it will connect to uh, detached sidewalks where that's possible. I, what I worry about is that the next development comes in and says, well, the next door sidewalk is attached, so we can't do anything else. And that happens to us all the time, even as we get further south on this roadway where the right-of-way is a little bit wider. Um, so what do we do to ensure that we don't end up with a, an attached sidewalk the entire length of this street as it redevelops, you know, lot by lot because we started with one?
Suppose a, a, Madam Mayor. Members of, of the council, I suppose you could add a con- I mean, they, you could ask the applicant to see if they could um, accommodate a detached sidewalk. Although the section of Moore Street does dead-end into Crane Creek. Um, I don't anticipate it ever being extended per se. But that, the house next to, next to it um, theoretically could redevelop. And at that point, you know, we could, you know, there might be a potential for additional sidewalks. Um, I could ask the applicant, see if they could adjust their design to accommodate a detached sidewalk here, adjacent to their, their development, to facilitate that.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are there other questions for staff? All right. The applicant?
Hi, this is Marla with New Design. Can you hear me?
Hi, I'm sorry. I thought somebody's walking up here, so I thought. Okay, great. Go ahead then. Did you say Marla?
Yes.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Can I share my screen?
Uh, yes. Yes, you may. We can see your screen now.
Okay, I just wanted to share this short video um, to help you get a better picture of the project. Um, it's again, nine townhomes or three, three-unit buildings. About uh, twenty-two hundred square feet each with two or three-car garage options. We've requested some variances for the property due to the unusual size of the property and shape of the property. And also, we have a large sewer easement running through our property. But where those setback variances are requested, there's no direct neighbors. There's either creeks or streets or uh, sewer easements. So those easements and creeks provide buffers to the buildings. I was asked to keep it brief, so if you have any questions, please um, ask. Otherwise, I'll stop it there. And uh, Derek with Rock Solid Civil is going to talk a little bit about the utilities.
Go ahead. Hi.
Yeah, Derek Kerner, two-seven-zero North Twenty-seventh Street, Boise. So we're the, Rock Solid is the design engineer for this project and just had a few notes. I'll keep it brief as well. If we don't have any, uh, I'll answer your, your questions as well, councilwoman. We don't have any problems with the recommendations of planning and zoning and the, the conditions. They had, they added a condition about a straight sidewalk that is north of those six units. We have a, a slight meander to it. They wanted it straight, and that's fine with us. Uh, th- this property is oddly shaped. It's an out parcel, an ACHD punch to Whitewater Park Boulevard through there. So it took the right client with the right vision and the right product to make this work. And I think we've achieved that. I think it's a good, a good layout and hopefully it's an example of how to, how to do it right. Fire department's okay with what we've got going on and is, it was tight. They were the first, first stop that we had. So Romeo and his shop, uh, making sure that they were okay with the ballers that we have exiting out onto Whitewater Park Boulevard. We have a full hammerhead turnaround on where Moore Street and this private drive will connect. Uh, ACHD has given us options on how we handle the Moore Street right-of-way. This is only thirty feet wide there. So it is a substandard right-of-way and we don't control the parcels on either side. So we're, we're uh, not able to um, get more. I, I do, so we plan on taking up that whole space with curb, uh, street, another curb and one dete- uh, one attached sidewalk. And that's what we had room for. There is attached sidewalk all along Moore Street and uh, is it Thirty-second? Thirty-second Street. So uh, as far as redevelopment goes, uh, I think it would be slow in this area uh, as far as redevelopment, but uh, there is a attached sidewalk already existing all along there. Uh, we, we were, we're uh, cared a lot about parking. Wanted to make sure we had enough. They've got options for two and three-car garages. Uh, they, we have nine uh, guest parking stalls on site. We didn't want parking to be bleeding out onto the neighbors uh, uh, Moore Street and, and Thirty-second Street. And that, that mattered to the neighbors, I do believe. There's also no parking out on Whitewater Park Boulevard because that's a, a major thoroughfare. We've got a large sewer easement that cuts um, in between where the, the, the row of six and where the, the three are. Uh, that sewer easement, you can see that the T intersection of that large sewer main that happens off-site and that is in that uh, affordable housing proposed project. The only concept plans that we have for that are, are old and preliminary. There was no, um, at least on their side, there was no connection. We can see that our road does go all the way up to our property line and that's where it will be. And it would look nice in a permanent configuration or punched through if it, if that layout so, so fit. Well, that, uh, because of that sewer easement there, they're not going to be putting buildings on top of that sewer main. So we're going to be uh, connected to an open area. And that's why, uh, as Marla suggested, we asked for that variance on that. That's uh, uh, property boundary setback, which was supported by staff. We're okay with the recommendations of staff and planning and zoning. Uh, we wanted the drive aisles up against the neighbor. You can see that we're completely going around one of the neighboring properties. We wanted a buffer and the drive aisles there. That way, these townhomes aren't looking down into neighbors backyard, and I think they appreciated that. Uh, I think cross, a cross-access easement is okay, and I, I touched on the detached sidewalk. So that's all I have. Um, do you have any more recommendations or conditions for us? Be okay.
Madam Mayor. Well, tha- thank you for answering those questions. I think um, you know, allowing the cross-access will be an important piece just in case that property um, does redesign. I, I understand the attached versus detached sidewalks. I bring it up every time I can because every where we can, we should be asking for detached. Um, I agree in this particular sense, it probably um, might not be achievable. But in all, I guess, you know, thank you for a thoughtful design that brings some much-needed housing.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, is there anybody here to testify on this item? All right.
All right. Madam Mayor.
I'll close the hearing.
Um, I move that we approve Whitewater Townhomes, S U B twenty-one dash nineteen Boise City Preliminary Plat um, at thirty-two oh-five West Moore Street with an additional condition that uh, if the property to the southeast uh, is redesigned, that cross-access will um, be considered.
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Madam Mayor, quick comment.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to thank the developer for some of the creativity that went into this piece. It is a little bit of a funky-shaped lot. And I think it took some creativity to make it possible. There's also some really neat elements like the permeable pavers that help with the drainage and some other stuff that didn't necessarily have to happen. Um, and so it's always exciting to see people go above and beyond to um, make something work in a really, really great space. So thank you for the hard work on that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Um, I just want to add, I have some friends who live on Thirty-second, just a couple of houses down from this um, piece of land.
And whenever I go over to their house, I'm like, when is somebody going to build on that piece of land? It's got to be so awkward and so tough to do, but at some point, we're going to see something come across our desk that really makes good on that frontage of Whitewater Park Boulevard, the access to the green belt and to our beautiful parks across the street. So thank you for coming up with a solution. I think it's going to be a really fantastic development. Um, and I know that I have council member, um, council members up here who appreciate that there are three-car garages with these.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, everything my colleagues just said, except I think probably the unsung hero of making this fit is probably the engineer. So um, good work, sir. The only concern that I had really when reviewing the packet was with the setbacks. Um, but as the applicant pointed out, in each case, the setback is adjacent to some other form of buffer or barrier. And of course, the point of a setback is to be a buffer or barrier. So that alleviated my concern there, and I'm looking forward to, to voting yes in a moment.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, yay, more housing and at least based on the example you gave in the graphic. It looks interesting and um, it looks like art. So for that reason alone, I love it.
All right. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Pageant.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks. Next up, Celine. We've got S U B twenty-one dash seven. And I saw Matt Schultz is here. Great. Matt, the applicant is here. And um, has anybody, is anybody else in the room here to testify on this? All right. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, council members, before you, there's a request for a preliminary plat subdivision for sixteen buildable in two common lots at ninety-three sixty-two W- Wichita Street. This is a five-and-a-half acre site in the southwest near Overland and Maple Grove. Wichita subdivision, as proposed, provides eleven lots off the new extension of Wichita Court and five lots off of the existing uh, Chincapin Place. While the planning team certainly advocates for connectivity, the presence of Five Mile Creek floodplain makes it difficult for vehicular connections. There is, however, a pedestrian pathway already in place along the west side of butting the property. We received standard comments from commenting agencies. Um, and at the P and Z hearing, we did receive letters of opposition with concerns for maintaining the mature trees and open space on site and the traffic impacts for the neighborhood. Um, much of the vegetation is along the creek, which won't be too disturbed. Uh, but the other trees on site would be difficult to save with the proposed layout. As for the traffic, ACHD did comment that the local roadways have capacity. Ultimately, the subdivision complies with the dimensional standards of the R one B zone and is allowed by code. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their May third hearing, and the decision is before the council this evening.
Any questions for Celine? Oh, you're still gone?
Nope.
All right. Come on up. Are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report? Please state your name.
Matt Schultz, eight-four-two-one, South Tim Mile Meridian here on behalf Schultz Development. Um, after that last hearing, this is, it's kind of boring, kind of vanilla. Uh, low-density, we're, our hands are a little tied on, on doing a PewDie or anything because of the airport overlay. There's a specific language that talks about three units per acre. And that just so happens to fit the existing R one B zone dimensional standards. So with the, with the, with the floodplain going through the middle of it and uh, it's really uh, the last infill piece, I think on the owner sold off the land around it twenty years ago for the, for the subdivisions that are out there. This is the last piece and our lots are compatible with everything around us. We are going to preserve the, the floodway in a unmanicured state. Um, we're natural, uh, clean out some of the noxious invasive stuff. Other than that, it's, it's, it's wet, um, birds, ducks, uh, wildlife, and we're going to keep it natural, not because we're cheap, just because I think it's the right thing to do um, in that case, and preserve all the big trees that we can on that east boundary. Uh, some are going to go, and even some of the big ones aren't healthy. But uh, we, we like trees and we're going to do all we can to keep the ones that we can. But uh, we do agree with staff report and the conditions of approval. I mean, it's all the, the standard dimensional standards of the R one B zone. And like I said, it's pretty boring, but it is what it is and it, and it fits. And we ask for your approval. Thank you.
All right. If there's nobody here to testify on this item, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move, uh, we approve Wichita subdivision, S U B twenty-one dash seven Boise City Preliminary Plat uh, at ninety-three sixty-two West Wichita Street.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Pageant.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have S O S twenty-one dash eleven. Celine.
Yes, council members, the next item is a plat note request to partially vacate a rear setback at seventeen forty-four Londoner Avenue in the Nelson's River Parkway subdivision. The vacation is in anticipation for the construction of a pool. The plat shows a thirty-foot setback for building. So with the vacation, the pool could be installed at the proposed ten feet from the rear outside of the utility irrigation and drainage easement. The parcel would still be subject to the R one C standards with a fifteen-foot setback for other buildings and structures if they want to build something in the future. And in summary, the planning team is recommending approval. Thank you.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, not a question about this particular um, application, which I support, but just a question in general. I know that this was approved some time ago. I believe we now have a policy that we don't allow these kinds of setbacks to be put in flats that, that are different than what our zoning code is. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, council president, that is correct. Um, it is quite cumbersome for individual homeowners to um, overcome these setbacks on the flats. So we do not do that practice anymore.
Great. Thank you.
All right. The applicant? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm Russ Phillips. I reside at seventeen forty-four Londoner in Boise. And uh, I think I tried to state all the reasons why we had to infringe on it. Generous thirty-foot setback. But in uh, I'm also a architect with Inside Architects, and this is probably one of our easiest site analysis where all the factors just made this corner of our property the, the best place for the pool. And uh, I appreciate that the uh, the staff and analyzes and, and agreed that uh, made the recommendation that this ought to be uh, vacated for this purpose. So any questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here to testify on this matter? No, Madam Mayor. Right. With that, I'll close the hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of S O S twenty-one dash eleven Boise City Vacation of Plat Note uh, at seventeen forty-four South Londoner Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Pageant.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move into the public hearing portion of the evening. First up, we have C R twenty-one dash eleven. And with this one, our Berliner Lowell Smith here. So the applicant is online?
Madam Mayor, they are online.
All right. And then just one other thing. I don't have anybody on this sheet signed up to testify. Is anybody here in the audience here to testify on this item? All right. If there's anyone online that wants to testify on this, raise your little zoom hand, and we'll work through the list after the staff and applicant present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item before you is a rezone of point eight-five acres at eighteen thirty-three South Vanelle Street from R one A Single Family Residential at two-point-one units per acre to R one B D A Single Family Residential with Development Agreement at four-point-eight units per acre. The property is located between Vincent Street and Three Mile Creek Road, approximately nine-hundred-and-thirty-two feet south of Overland Road. It currently has one single-family residence, and the surrounding area is zoned R one A to the north, west, and east, and R one B D A to the south. The site is in a residential neighborhood comprised of large and medium lots with single-family homes. There are commercial uses to the north and east adjacent to Overland Road and Milwaukee Street. As detailed in the project report, the planning team finds the R one B D A zone to be most appropriate for the property based on the allowed zones of the suburban land used, surrounding area, B one airport influence area, and proposed development. In order to comply with the B one airport influence overlay, a development agreement has been submitted with the rezone application to keep residential density to the five units per acre allowed within the airport interim policy for parcels within the B one overlay, but outside the sixty-five D N L noise contour. The Boise Airport has indicated no objections to the density maximum of four-point-eight units per acre on the property, provided that an avocation easement is recorded. We received standard agency comments and no opposition. And as indicated in your packet, the applicant's proposal complies with approval criteria for a rezone. As such, the planning team and Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the application with conditions. Thank you, and I have any questions?
Any questions? All right. We will now hear from the applicant online. You should be able to speak at this point. We should be able to hear you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is Lowell Smith. We have no additional comments.
Hello, Mr. Smith? I think it's Mr. Smith talking.
Yes.
I can tell that you're speaking. However, we can hardly hear you. It's like a little whisper.
If I get closer or speak up, can you hear me?
It's a little better, but still really tough. I, I don't know if I'm, I'm looking at the back of the wall to our tech room. I don't know if he can raise the volume or if it's a matter of where the speaker is for you.
Madam Mayor? We have no comments, Your Honor.
Oh, you have no comments? All right.
I was gonna say, the only thing I heard was they had no additional comments.
Oh, so I didn't even hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Berlin. Sorry that I couldn't hear you, but, but thank you for that. That makes this easy. We don't have to troubleshoot the sound. All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? Nope. And is anyone online? No, Madam Mayor. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of C A R twenty-one dash eleven Berlin and Lowell Smith at eighteen thirty-three South Vanelle Street. Rezone of point eight-five acres from R one A to R one B with development agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Pageant?
Yes.
Clegg?
Yes.
Hallie Burton?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Woodings?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, and the final event is C A R twenty-one dash twelve. Come back. And with this, I imagine then all of you here are here to testify on this. Wonderful. And we also have some names on here, perhaps of people that are, that are online. So what we'll do is start with the folks in the room, and then we'll work through the names of people that have signed up in advance. And then anybody else that didn't sign up, just raise your hand, and we'll be able to call on you. With that, go ahead, Celine.
Madam Mayor, council members, the last item before you tonight is a rezone of roughly two-point-one acres on Palouse Street. This is five hundred feet from Vista Avenue between Overland and Targi. The land use designation is compact, which allows for a host of zones, including open space, residential, and office. The site is currently zoned R one C, which allows a maximum of eight units. The applicant is requesting L O D or limited office with design review and would include a development agreement. The L O usually allows forty-three-point-five units per acre. But with the development agreement, the request would facilitate a residential project for forty units or a density of nineteen-point-two units per acre. It would also limit the height to thirty-five feet, and the perimeter setbacks would be fifteen feet, which are very similar and in line with the R one C surrounding the area. While the request to office for residential use is not typical, the specifics and limitations placed upon the site with the D A would provide assurances for what would be developed. And also, to be clear, there was no P U D or subdivision proposed with the site as the applicant wanted assurances that the zone request would be approved. Approved or not, so the site plan shown has not been reviewed in detail at this time. There was a mix of support and opposition voice at the P and Z hearing. The support wanted the density and the new housing supply and the walkability it would provide for the area. The opposition was also concerned with the density. Excuse me. The traffic and parking concerns that it would bring and the scale of the development. It is important to note that the difference here between the allowed zones would be five units, as mentioned in the report. The limitation of height and setbacks make it consistent with the R one C. And A C H D had no objections to the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, feeling that the increase of density wasn't a predictable pattern and would set up a spot zone situation. It's ultimately the council's decision this evening if the D A with the specific conditions would provide enough assurances to allow a few more housing units to the area, or if it would be too much of a stark contrast. That concludes my presentation, and I'll stand for questions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Celine. My question, you know, the, the zone that was chosen because of, in, in part because of the limitations of our existing zone, is one that's labeled limited office, but all of our office zones allow residential. My question has to do with what's potentially allowed with the development agreement with a limited office versus what might be allowed with an R two and some attempt by a developer to add accessory dwelling units to what might also already be allowed in an R two. And you know, I'm not making any judgment one way or the other, but I'm just trying to figure out where, where we are in terms of density, where we are in terms of the kind of product and how it serves the neighborhood. And how, what, what might be the zone that, that would maybe best, you know, thread that needle? And I know that you all probably had a lot of discussion about that. So hopefully you can, you know, just enlighten us a bit on, on the various things that that got tossed back and forth during that discussion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council President, on the screen here shows you the different zoning designations that could be compatible with the area. So the current zone of R one C, the proposed L O D, the R two, as you mentioned, as well as the R one M. For the R two, they would be allowed up to a maximum of thirty units, whereas the L O that they're requesting would be forty units. A D U's could be a possibility within the R two or the R one M. Just depends on the product type, I suppose. You know, the site is fairly small, so if they did thirty units, it'd probably be either attached or on top of garages. Ultimately, though, the R two, the R one M, and even the L O all have very similar setbacks and height. The, the L O does have a higher, well, they all have thirty-five feet. The L O has a ten-foot setback, so then that's why we recommended the fifteen-foot setback, just to be compatible with the other R zones. So I think really, at the end of the day, is just the density. That's before council this evening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? So Celine, there's the high density that's listed further south. Is that the Oak Park? Oak Park Village, it's shown there in yellow. And then I think that there's a few other, few others in the area, Hawaii Place Apartments. I think there's the Hillcrest View Apartments. So there's a few others that maybe have some higher density. And I don't know if you know any of the history there or not. I'm curious if those required a rezone and what they, what they started out, what they went to in those rezones.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Hallie Burton, I'm, I'm not familiar with those areas. It looks like the one that you're calling out with the high density is Zone C two, so it's a commercial zone for residential use. My guess it was already C two long ago, and then the residential came in. But I'm not familiar with the history.
Madam Mayor, follow up. So the one there that we're looking at, the high density, I think that's Oak Park. So that's a couple of blocks off of, just a couple of parcels off of Vista. Relatively similar to what's being proposed right now. What I'm trying to wrap around in my brain is that if we're trying to find a predictable development pattern, if there's been other circumstances in the past that would make this look predictable, or if this is really sort of unprecedented in that area. Does that make sense?
It does. I think one good way to look at it, I, there's two ways to look at it. There, the L O is a permissible zone, so it is a somewhat predictable pattern that the comp plan does foresee. Certainly, going to rezone to office straight for residential use is not typical. But as President, Council President mentioned, our zoning code is getting outdated. We are looking at trying to update things, and this is one way that the applicant was able to fit within the, the land use and, and not max out the L O density. They just are asking for a little bit more density.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Mayor? Celine, I'm looking at criteria three for approval, which is the one that we always seem to fall back on. It's maintaining a predictable development pattern and preserving the compatibility of surrounding zoning and development. And my question is about where to think of those in time. You may recall this came up earlier with the special exception issue a few months ago. So when I look at the zoning map and a land use map for this neighborhood, and then I look at what's there, am I trying to maintain compatibility with the surrounding built environment or with the permissible uses in the permissible zones at the other end of the spectrum? In other words, am I trying to keep it compatible with the highest level of use that might be permitted in, in this area if it was all developed to the maximum extent? Or am I trying to keep it compatible with what is presently built there and what is presently existing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Pageant, that's a great question. That's, that's a million-dollar question. I think every site is different. And with the way our city is growing, to, to focus on compatibility with the current existing pattern of development during our housing crisis could be seen as an underutilization of the site. The one thing I will say about maintaining and preserving the zoning for the area, certainly L O would stand out, but because you have the development agreement attached, you can essentially make it a one-use, one, you know, a special exception, if you will, and come up with your own zoning code standards within this D A. So while on the map, it might show up purple and might seem out of place with that development agreement, it gives you all the assurances of what exactly you'd like to see developed here.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? One more question, Celine. So could the developer have achieved the same density with an R one M or the same number of units on this particular parcel with an R one M designation and planned unit development application rather than what we've got before us?
Madam Mayor, Council President, the R one M would give you total units of thirty-five units, and what they're requesting is for forty units.
Okay.
So it, I think before you tonight-
Used A D U's or something else?
Unless there's A D U's, of course, but the A D U's, but you know, are deed restricted for owner occupancy of one unit at least.
Right, which might actually meet one of the goals of some of the folks in the neighborhood.
Certainly. Another way, I was gonna say duplexes, but we would still count that as units. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we will hear from Yep, Penelope.
Mayor McClain, council members for the record, Penelope Constantikis, Post Office Box four oh five, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh one. And I'm gonna answer a couple of questions before I start. I did an analysis of all of the larger parcel multifamily activity. Probably five blocks on the other side of Vista, just tried to isolate kind of an oval area. The most recent multifamily development in that area, to the best of my knowledge, was nineteen eighty-six. So it's been a while since anything happened there. And most of them were back in the seventies. And then with regard to the question about A D U's, Councilwoman, we would have to do a more traditional residence in order to do an A D U. So we would lose density. There'd be a net loss, I think. So to do it that way. Anyhow, the purpose of the hearing this evening, as you know, is for a rezone of the fi, of four parcels that are located at twenty-eight oh one West Palouse from R one C to L O D D A. My hope is that we can have a dialogue this evening. That seems to work best. Your approval, of course, is requested and would be gratefully appreciated. Most of the comments that were provided by the neighbors have more to do with site layout and design and the future townhomes. To keep at the topic at hand, I believe these comments should be addressed with the plat, P U D, and design review elements should we receive our rezone. Where appropriate, I will weave into my presentation elements of the public comments, but I do want to stay pretty close to the topic at hand. So my focus this evening is to place a proposed rezone within the context of the required findings provided by Boise City Code. So the city of Boise issued a call to action for affordable and workforce housing. And this applicant is carrying that call to action forward with a proposed townhouse project facilitated by a rezone that would enhance available housing stock. It's really modest in scope at two acres. And it's designed appropriately to respect the surrounding use. I worked for Community Development Incorporated and friend Cornforth as a senior development manager in the past and their mission to provide affordable housing across the West. I found this quote by Mr. Cornforth in Huffington Post, and I think it's really appropriate for our discussion this evening. I'm paraphrasing him, and as he's explaining housing issues simply and accurately. "The fundamental challenge of the housing crisis in Boise and everywhere else is that the only way to make housing costs decline is to overbuild. Vacancy rates need to be at eight percent or higher before housing costs will start to come down. But the backlog is so great, and each year the backlog grows, and the challenge of meeting housing needs gets worse." So that's kind of where we are right now. We were really surprised by the attendance at the P and Z hearing by some members of the community that are, belong to the Afford Boise Facebook page. I went and checked them out afterwards. It was pretty awesome. We didn't invite them. I didn't even know they existed. But this action on their part is one of the things that makes Boise so great. Their future leaders for Boise, who are looking into the future, are very interested in keeping Boise affordable, and they actually made an office to positively get involved. So to begin with, I'd like to restate or define the project that the rezone application is about, so that we're real clear on what we're planning to do or what, what we would like to do. So the immediate action is a request for a rezone. Regardless, as Celine mentioned, regardless of what the L O zone allows in terms of density, this proposal is specifically for a total of forty units or about nineteen units per acre. Development agreement to restrict the density- The development agreement to restrict the density and other constraints was not unexpected. In addition to the restrictive elements proposed in the DA, including density and height, et cetera, I would suggest that the requirement to plat be added to the DA as well, as this is what is intended by the applicant. These residences will be on individual platted lots for individual ownership. The proposal is not, in the true sense of the word, a multifamily proposal, other than there's a provision for amenities, guest parking, and HOA with community responsibilities for maintenance of the common area and building exteriors, and a unified set of rules for the community as a whole. The site plan proposes 86 parking spaces, which includes the two car garages that come with each residence. To be transparent with city staff, a site plan and elevations with an intended bed and bath combo information was provided to the city. Though the design review, PUD, excuse me, through the design review, PUD, and plat process, the site will be further refined. The separation between the neighboring parcels and project site have been maximized. And we believe go beyond what would be provided, for example, with a series of skinny houses. The 35 foot, three story height limit is already permitted in R1C. Just an interesting note on traffic. Townhomes generate less than half as many trips as single family residential. And this is based on extensive data that's been collected by the ITE Group, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And over an extended period of time, the comparison of trip counts is point four nine vehicle trips in the PM peak hour for single family traditional home. It's point two two for townhomes. And both the PM and AM peak hour trip generations are light less by about the same amount. We believe that the trip, excuse me, the design review process will carefully evaluate designs to assure that the design of the structures is appropriate. To prepare for this hearing this evening, I looked at the comp plan again, the zoning ordinance, the Vista Neighborhood Plan. I looked at the staff report and reviewed comments, letters submitted by residents in the neighborhood. I looked at published, recently published articles and blogs on urban design and solutions. I looked at local reporting and news articles about housing and development challenges in Boise. One side note before I go any further, there's this concept called the missing middle that's showing up very frequently in this urban design discussion. So someone who is in the missing middle is a resident that has too much income to access assistance, but not enough income to buy a single family traditional home. So the underlying questions this evening to be answered are the three criteria that are required by Boise Code. Does the proposed rezone comply with the comp plan? Is it in the best interest of the city for public convenience and general welfare? And does it maintain and preserve compatibility with the surrounding area? Hopefully, I'm not putting you all asleep. Good. All right. So does the proposed rezone comply with Blueprint Boise? We believe it does. The comp plan has many goals and objectives to base this rezone on. For example, this is an infill development for residential development. This is an assemblage of parcels to provide a more predictable pattern of growth. It supports not one, but two activity centers. The one at Overland in Vista and the one at Targi in Vista. That was a little bit of a problem for the PNC Commission. We weren't exactly sure why, but that's okay. I did want to say stability does not equal no change or stasis. No change and no growth is inherently unstable. No change creates complacency, and it's human nature. Measured and appropriate change stimulates a refreshed view, and it's a good thing. Preservation of neighborhoods does not eliminate the need to adapt to changing conditions, of which we have seen quite a bit of. Consuming land appropriate for local commercial and retail uses with residential uses depletes the resource and fails to meet one of the action items in the Vista Neighborhood Plan under their land use application review policies, and I'm stating specifically. It says, "Within 600 feet of the Overland Road, Federal Way, and Vista Avenue corridors, encourage uses and development densities which stimulate market activity to a level where local business reliance upon pass-through vehicle trips may be reduced." So we're just short of 500 feet from the Vista corridor.
Thirty second warning.
So the, excuse me if I may, Madam Mayor. I actually looked at the code and it indicated oh, 30 minutes. I thought I saw, but do you need me to stop or can I finish? I'll go real quick.
Thirty minute round, then everybody gets thirty. That's the maximum we can give.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, it's 10 minutes.
Okay, that should be enough.
And then we'll do the same for the Neighborhood Association.
Okay, I apologize. So this will encourage residential densities and stimulate pedestrian oriented commercial redevelopment. So in the urban form and setting section, the neighborhood plan says, although Vista Avenue District lays adjacent to four neighborhood subareas, much of the land within the district is still underutilized and cannot support storefront pedestrian oriented development until a greater residential density is achieved. So compatibility, again, is not the same as the same. And we don't believe that the rezone will negatively impact the area. It will change the area on a local level, but we believe in a positive way. The use of LO has been covered. It's the only tool that's available in the toolbox at Boise City right now. There are some extraordinary costs because there are some old commercial buildings, industrial buildings that will have to be removed, and that's expensive. Demo is very expensive. So we're not insensitive and not oblivious to the concerns of the neighborhood. There's some parking issues in existence in the neighborhood now. Maybe the neighborhood could get together and solve some of those problems collectively, as opposed to waiting for someone else to do that for them. We've got lots of buffer. We've got architecturally designed elevations. We've got 30 feet of, 36 feet of separation from any residential parcel adjacent to the site. So we believe that the rezone is in the best interest of the city. It will make a difference in housing in Boise without overwhelming the neighborhood. Two acres is modest. Rather than developing a traditional multifamily, this site will be platted and available for homeownership. Supporting the transit system is in the best interest of the city, public convenience, and general welfare. Providing the transit system is a substantial cost to the community, and it provides value for every citizen. Leaving commercial zone areas available for commercial and retail development is a good idea. It replaces an eyesore with an intentional community with homes that are available to purchase. Adding new homes frees up older residential stock that is more available. So we believe it maintains compatibility. Compatibility is not the same as the same. So these are row homes. Eagleston subdivision had 1,057 lots in it, which is to our north, northwest, and west. There are a hundred, there are over 1,000 lots in that subdivision. So very forward thinking, again, very modest in exchange for six units. The neighborhood loses an eyesore and gains a cohesive residential community with all the amenities that go along with the PUD. And with that, I will be done. Can I answer any questions? Thank you for letting me go a little long.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Same question for you that I had for staff. One of the approval criteria is maintaining and preserving the compatibility of surrounding zoning and development. And I think I read those as two different things, compatibility with the zoning and then compatibility with development. So staff gave an answer about how to try to interpret that and apply it here. And I wonder what your answer is specifically for the zone that you've asked for, because I think with a little bit less density, you can get there with R2 or R1M. But how does, how does the zone that you've asked for, how is that compatible with the existing zoning and then also with the existing development?
Madam Mayor, Councilman. I guess the way I look at it is, this really isn't, the LO designation is, it's just a tool. It's a, calling something a vice grip as opposed to the brand name that it's made out of. Like I stated previously, LO is the only tool that's available in the toolbox that Boise City zoning code provides. So it's, in my opinion, a lot less about what designation we're using, but what is being provided as a result of the rezone. So, and I understand your question about compatibility. Again, I don't think that compatibility equals the same. And it's a modest sized site. We would have five less units if we down zoned it R1M. So it's not a big, it's not a big difference. And given the cost of land today, each residence, the cost of land now is at least one third of the total price of anything. So as that continues to climb, these smaller residences on smaller lots become the target for people with more modest income. And that's who we're trying to provide housing for.
No, I, I hear you. Madam Mayor, follow up?
Sure.
I hear you on all that. I guess let me ask a question, hopefully in a better way. The zone you've asked for is the only tool to get to 40 units, but it's not the only tool in the toolbox. R1M would get you to 35. And there's a better argument that that's compatible with the existing zoning and development. And we're gonna hear testimony later from, from many concerned citizens who are going to say this, particularly this last five units is a leap too far because it's not compatible. And as I'm listening to all this, I'm trying to really hear your argument for why that last five units between the zone you've asked for and R1M is still compatible with the existing zoning and the existing development.
Well, I guess I'll return to my original comment, which is compatibility is not the same as the same. And the opportunity to consolidate multiple parcels and actually do a project that's designed and intended is so rare that maximizing the potential of the site, I think justifies the additional units. If you're standing out on the street looking at the site and you don't know how many units are there, I'm not sure that you would know the difference between 35 and 40. So I hope that answers your question.
I, I think, standing on the street, I'm not sure you would know the difference is a brilliant answer to the compatibility question. So thank you.
Oh, sure.
Madam Mayor. Quick question, kind of related, I guess. When you were exploring this piece of property, did you consider R1M, 35 units? Was that a consideration? And then it was just, it wasn't going to be possible to make that happen? Or is the goal to get those additional five units to add that housing inventory stock? I guess I just, I want to know, when we're taking a look at a jump, and I think you used the word, you know, downsizing to, to a lower zone. When you kind of look at what is existing right now, and you're kind of actually jumping up two sizes, right? You're jumping from R1C past R12, past R1M to, you know, kind of a few stages up. I'm just trying to figure out if, if you've considered some of those other ones and why the jump needed to be made from those to the other.
Madam Mayor, Councilman. If you look at the vicinity of this site, it has a very heavy load of skinny houses. And the density between those substantial groups, there's one that's 12 to the south and west of us by maybe a half a block. The, the density that we're asking for is essentially in the neighborhood already. Again, the difference between a run of skinny homes and a planned development is that the skinny homes aren't governed by HOAs. They don't have unified exterior maintenance requirements. They don't, they don't have someone taking care of the landscaping, that kind of thing. So we did look at R1M. I did a project on Longmont that had an R1M zone. And normally, I don't like to bring up economics, but this site has got some serious demo work that's gonna have to be done. And it's not a very attractive site. I mean, it's actually quite unattractive. And in order for the developer builder community to step forward and try to help the city implement their objectives, you have to be able to pencil things. So the fact that it's a consolidation of parcels, which is very rare, when the comp plan was approved, there was seven percent of the central bench area that was available as vacant land. I'm sure that's gone down quite a bit. So it's, it was a combination of what's on the site now, what needs to happen in order to make it developable. The fact that there's already fairly intensive pockets of density in the immediate vicinity of the site already, that it was an, an agglomeration of all those factors that led to the LO, simply because it is the missing middle. It's not the lower densities, and it's not the extremely high density. So we tailored it with a development agreement request to make it consistent with the neighborhood to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. So along the lines of some of my questions earlier, thinking about ways to achieve the things you talked about, the affordable housing, the kind of density that will support residential, retail uses, the ability to design this in a way that makes it compatible and also ensures that it will be taken care of. A part that seems missing to me and maybe part of what we hear in terms of some of the objections is that even though this may be a very nice product, it's 40 units of the same product. And it's 40 units that likely in this market are barely going to be high workforce, if, if not even more expensive than that. And wondered if you thought about a mixed product where not every unit was exactly the same size or the same type? Or whether you thought about the possibility of making some of these accessories so that we could be ensured that there would be some owner occupancy? And just trying to think in general, how do you achieve this density in a way that might be more acceptable, more, more incompatible? I agree with you, compatible is not the same. But acceptable as, this seems like more of what I already see around my neighborhood or what I desire for my neighborhood, and not just another townhome development where everything's the same.
Understood. Madam Mayor, Councilwoman. I'm not exactly sure how to answer that. Of course, when you, when your architect has to design a multiple set of floor plans and elevations, then then the cost goes up. And with workforce housing, that missing middle, it becomes a real small hole that you're trying to thread. So I understand that some of that can be done through the design review process and the changes in materials and color, which adds a more complex view. And I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I know how to answer your question. I do understand what you're asking for. I think that probably with the exception of the run of units that will be immediately adjacent to Palouse, the rest of them won't even really be visible. And they'll be, everyone will see the fronts of the buildings instead of the backs of the buildings, which we did to make the separation as far as possible from property lines. If you have some suggestions on how to do that, that would enable us to keep the project in play, we would welcome them. Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, follow up if I might. So a couple of more technical questions. As I look at the potential layout and site plan, I see some things that, I mean, I, I believe I understand what you're trying to do, but you have sidewalks, I'm assuming, or maybe they're just aprons along the backs of the garages, and yet you have a 26 foot service lane, which ends up which ends up being 36 foot from back of garage to back of garage. And it seems like that's, that could be reduced. And in reducing it, you could increase the green space. I see you treating the back of the property as if it's front yards facing on the backyards rather than those back, the ones to the south, maybe treating them as garage loaded with the backyard being the backyard and allowing backyards to back onto each other, which might make it more compatible. With such a small site, having, having sidewalks across each of the sets of units and yet not a real decipherable circulation, pedestrian circulation plan, for me, kind of makes it less desirable, if you will, less, feels less like a residential development. And just wondered if, if anyone had talked to you or thought about any of those kinds of issues.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, those are three great ideas.
Yeah.
That we would be happy to implement. So what we were trying to do, of course, this was all conceptual, but we didn't want to just show up with a rezoned application. We thought it was incumbent on us to at least provide you with some idea of what was being looked at in terms of the development plan. So reducing that drive aisle would be great. And the fire department requires 26 feet. So as long as we're keeping Ramon, Romeo Gervais happy, we're good with that. Doing the backyard to backyard is a fine idea. We rotated the buildings thinking that we would be making it better for the neighbors. But if you think that spinning those back around and doing backyard to backyard is a better idea, absolutely no problem with that. And then modifying the sidewalk and pedestrian circulation, it's another great idea. We'd be happy to look at that. And, and so that PUD and design review process, this information can be included in the development agreement if you like. And we'll, we'll re-approach the site design and implement those ideas. I don't think there's any problem with any of that. We'd be happy to go along with it. You kind of work in the dark when you propose something like that and you think you know what might make people happy, so you do it. And it's not always the right idea. So thanks for the right ideas.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for the applicant right now? All right, we are going to take a break.
Thank you.
And we'll be back in five-ish minutes. And then we'll hear from members of the public that are here and then online. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and pick up where we left off, which in advance of the residents speaking, we have a statement that will be read. The Neighborhood Association was not able to attend tonight, so they provided staff with a letter, if I'm correct, Celine, that you're reading on their behalf?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Great.
That's correct.
And if you'll just also include, you probably already are, the Neighborhood Association name or any contact information.
Yeah, I believe they just signed it as Board of Directors, Vista Neighborhood Association. So the Vista Neighborhood Association would like to officially oppose the proposed development. As proposed, we feel this development is incompatible for our neighborhood due to the following reasons. This proposed upzone would be from R1C, eight units per acre, to LOD, forty-three and a half units per acre. This is a large jump in density in an area surrounded by the R1C zone. There is no precedent for this amount of density in our neighborhood. Number two, the zoning code states the LOD is a zone intended to accommodate office space in locations that are served by primary roadways but that are inappropriate for commercial development because of the proximity to residential uses. None of the above mentioned is applicable in the case of the proposed units on Palouse Street. The proposed development is not adjacent to an arterial roadway or adjacent to medium or high-density housing. Number three, as designed, the units do not fit the design aesthetic of the established neighborhood. There are no other row homes or three-story dwellings in the surrounding vicinity. Number four, as designed, we feel there is inadequate parking. We feel seven visitor spots for forty-three units is not reasonable. Additionally, one ADA parking spot is not sufficient. And lastly, number five, with proposed density of this magnitude, we would expect more green space and/or amenities. As designed, there is no open space, very limited green space, no designated pet area, and no playground or pool. We feel this is insufficient for the proposed forty units. The Vista Neighborhood Association does not support upzoning the property, or sorry, does support upzoning the property to R2, fourteen and a half units per acre. This would allow a total of thirty-two units with the above-mentioned amenities. We feel this option is more in line with our established neighborhood. Thank you sincerely, the Board of Directors, Vista Neighborhood Association.
We can't ask questions of them, so we will. Thank you for reading that on behalf of the neighborhood. And with that, we'll go ahead and start. I have Sue and Mark Shepherdson first. Do you want to come up?
Okay, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. First of all, my name is Sue Shepherdson, and along with my husband, Mark, we have lived at twenty-seven oh-two Palouse for forty-five years. I have lived in Boise my whole life. I appreciate you guys and what you do for the city. Like I said, we have lived at twenty-seven oh-two Palouse for forty-five years, and we have enjoyed this quiet, friendly neighborhood. We believe that Palouse Street and Abb Street were made for single-family resident homes and do not agree with the proposal for rezoning to LODDA. I grew up in the north end of Boise, and when I got married, Mark and I moved to the bench area because of the quiet neighborhood feel and the unique house at twenty-seven oh-two Palouse. It is a house that was built in nineteen-twenty, and it has the charm of that era. We raised our family in this quiet neighborhood. We love this area because of its quaintness. We love it because of its location and accessibility to the freeway and downtown. We love it because it is not crowded like other parts of the valley. By rezoning the property, we feel that it would cause too much of a density problem for this street and the surrounding streets. The traffic impact on Palouse and Abs would be severe and possibly unsafe, as Abb Street doesn't even have sidewalks. We do not have any problem with new housing being built on this property that complies with the current R1 zoning. We need to have more affordable housing, but not apartments that will be owned by investors instead of individual homeowners. Please consider the opinions and feelings of the residents that live in this area, along with the recommendation from the planning and zoning to deny the request for rezoning of this property due to its location in the interior of a neighborhood and the impact on the access roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you testifying as well? Come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I'm Mark Shepherdson, and I reside at twenty-seven oh-two West Palouse. I've been there for forty-five years. Sure, sorry, first day. Anyway, I'm opposed to the jump in zoning. I could support R2 zoning as proposed by planning and zoning for that area with reduced density from forty down to thirty units. You look at the area, and it's a small area, and it's internal to a neighborhood, and it's surrounded by houses, all Palouse Street up and down is Palouse, or just single-family homes and older homes. In fact, on this piece of property, there's going to be three homes that have to be demolished that have been there, pretty nice homes with this plan, which will change the look of the neighborhood, but you're going to have change. Palouse Street, like they say, is five hundred feet to Vista Street, but there's no stoplight on Palouse and Vista. Down on Canal Street, where we showed all the homes and apartments, there's a stoplight on Canal and Vista for people to get in and out of Canal Street and get in and out of that area, and there's a lot of those types of three-story apartments down there. On Palouse Street, I know from Vista, I think going east or west on Vista, I don't know of anything like this there. So it's, to me, forty units in there, thirty-five feet tall, on the face of Vista Street, is pretty incompatible to the neighborhood. It just doesn't fit that many. I just think it'd be overbuilt. Regardless of the fact, if there's a lot of demolition to do on that side or not, I don't think that should be a consideration for how it should be zoned. I think the consideration be zoned for what we can do to improve density, but also how it's going to impact our neighborhood and our homes in that area. And I think this forty units in there will have quite a bit of negative impact with almost overbuilt people on top of people and parking and cars. I mean, just to me, it's just, it's a little overwhelming. Anyway, I'm just opposed to that jump in zoning, and I would support planning and zoning R2. Anyway, well, thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have Natasha Tully. Hi, welcome.
I think Celine's gonna maybe help me with a slide, and I'll give you the prompts. If you could just put the first one up. Okay, there it is. Wonderful. So, Madam Mayor and distinguished council members, families move to Boise because it's a place to live, where streets are safe for children to walk to school, and where they have a space to breathe and a space to call home. The existing zoning of this neighborhood allows this to still be possible. Even with an R2, it would allow it to be possible. There simply isn't the infrastructure to allow this area at the bench to support the rezoning to LO, nor is it prudent to do so. Rezoning, if approved, would allow for forty-three point five per units per acre. I am well aware of the building proposal, but rezoning would allow carte blanche to the developers to increase the size of this project as they see fit. The neighborhood has an infrastructure to support the current R1 zoning. If rezoned to LO, there would be a significant increase in traffic on a non-primary roadway, not to mention that both Abs and Palouse Streets have areas of unimproved pedestrian walkways, i.e., there are no sidewalks. Rezoning would create a public safety issue due to the increase of traffic for pedestrians and schoolchildren alike walking down Abs and Palouse Street. Additionally, the project of this size doesn't fit with the existing neighborhood. On Palouse Street from Columbus to Roosevelt Street, there are no infills or townhomes. The majority of adjacent properties are single-level, single-family homes largely set back from the streets. This is, slide one, this is my home at twenty-seven fifty West Palouse Street. This home was built in nineteen thirty-six and still has much of the original charm. If you could go to the next one. These are my neighbors. To the right and left of me, the White House is the Shepherdsons', and the house to the other side of me is my other neighbor, John, who's not here. These are older, well-maintained homes with large setbacks. There are no other infills or townhomes. This is the view from the front of my property across to the proposed rezoning project. Note the current property setbacks on that with those three houses. There isn't an infill or apartment complex in sight. Slide four, this is an image from my kitchen window. Please note the power poles. Those are typically thirty-five feet high.
Thirty-second warning.
Right, sorry. And that would be the approximate size of the units that are proposed, not at all fitting with the current neighborhood. If you go to the next slide, please. I've lived in this home for nine years exactly today. When looking for a home, I didn't want to live in a townhouse, and I certainly didn't want to live across from one. I wanted a small home with a space to call my own. I want that same for others, a space, a sense of community, and a connection to the neighborhood. Rezoning to LO doesn't offer this possibility to our new neighbors. Please allow this area to...
You've got a blank.
Yeah, you can finish up. You're good. Thank you. Allow this area to continue to please be a place of single-family homes. R1, R2 allows us to be that. We want those people to live in them and own them and be Boiseans. It's not the duty of the city of Boise to ensure that investors and developers make money. It is the duty rather to look out for the future of Boise and those that call Boise home. I would also like to mention that the Vista Neighborhood Association is opposed to this rezoning. It was unanimously rejected by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I implore you to come to the same conclusion, not for the current Idahoans, but for the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I confirm that the other resident, the woman in the back in the room, is not testifying on this. Great, wanted to make sure that was still the case. And now we'll see, I know that Dave Kengas is online, but first I had, I have a list, Dave, I guess you're probably listening. Natasha was on that list. Molly McDonald was first on the list, so we'll start with Molly if she's here.
Madam Mayor, Molly or Amber are not online.
Okay. So, Dave, you're next on the list. Welcome, Dave.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Mayor and Council, this is Dave Kengas. I reside at seventeen fifteen West Canal Street. I am testifying on my behalf, on my own behalf, not part of Vista Neighborhood Association.
Sorry, I have a bit of a lag. I'm just going to let you know that we're only seeing the tip-top of your head, so you might want to adjust your phone. Yeah, I think you'll like that better. Thanks.
Sorry about that. I had represented the Neighborhood Association with planning and zoning hearing, but I resigned in between, and I had requested to represent the Neighborhood Association on this hearing, but that was denied by the board. I adamantly oppose this rezon because it just doesn't fit. It's an island of R1C in a unique part of the neighborhood that we should really hold out for something special, that when you look at the development, you go, wow, that's cool. They put some work into it, they got creative, and they created something special that'll enhance the neighborhood. This is a block of apartments. This is block housing. We, there is a similar project on Canal of twenty-four three-story townhomes that promote affordable, single-family living, but all of those units are being sold by building, not a single one will come up for sale. And looking at the design of this and the request by the developer for seven six plexes, I have a feeling this product will be sold before they even break ground. It just does not fit the neighborhood. There's no transitions from the single-family homes that surround it to three-story. There is no thought to giving something creative and match what the neighborhood is doing. It seems that staff and the developer key on skinny homes, which, thanks to design review standards, skinny homes are gorgeous homes. They vary. They look different. They're not a wall of identical homes that you look at that you might get confused coming home at two in the morning, which one's yours? These people have poured their heart and soul into these homes surrounding the neighborhood. They look great. With everybody moving here to the valley with the demand, people are putting money into neighborhoods like this. This kind of development will cause people across the street and surrounding it to move because that's not what they bought into. There is just no design. Oak Park Village was a brownfield development from Vista Avenue to the back. It is surrounded by two-story townhomes that transition from the apartments. All of the other high-density apartments brought up on the plan are in zones and aren't arterials. The VNA hasn't approved a high-density upzone in twenty years that I've been involved. This absolutely just doesn't fit.
Dave, you've got about thirty seconds.
Okay. That really, it just doesn't fit. The neighborhood is nice and upcoming. People have poured their heart and soul into it. Palouse, Shoshone, Lemhi, the whole neighborhood is improving. This will just be a backstep. Say no, have the developer go back to the drawing board and come up with something creative with character. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Madam Mayor, we have Jennifer Barnett.
Great. Hey, Dave, we can still see you, just FYI.
Okay, I won't pick a note.
All right. Hello, my name is Jennifer Barnett, nineteen fifty-one South Abb Street in Boise. Tonight, I'm asking the mayor and city council to deny TradeWinds' proposed rezon to LO or limited office on West Palouse. This zoning is unprecedented in this neighborhood. It is apparent that profit is driving this developer's appeal after they were unanimously denied by planning and zoning and after being adamantly opposed by the Vista Neighborhood Association. It is important to note that it is not just the nearby neighbors asking the city to deny this rezon, for the city to allow this developer to squeeze in forty or more eight-plex block style units with inadequate green space and inadequate guest parking to bring eighty to one hundred residents and their overflow parking to one small section of Palouse Street is hard to fathom. This area is not an eyesore, as quoted by Penelope. There are three nice and well-maintained, single-family homes on the property that are all currently occupied by long-term residents that would be demolished. This rezon and development lacks long-term planning in regard for the people living in the surrounding homes by adding overwhelming density under the pretense of more affordable housing availability for new renters and first-time homeowners looking to buy in Boise. Based on their proposed square footage, these units will not be affordable by definition. While changes needed in Boise's housing availability, in this case, the rezon and planned development does not fit the city's definition of predictable development in the comp plan. It is not compatible with the existing neighborhood in design or in density. This development offers no connectivity to other areas and does not fit in with the exterior look or character of the surrounding homes, all zoned R1C. These are not arterial roads here. This is not Vista or Overland that might better support a development like this with mixed zoning. These are residential side streets lined with well-maintained, single-family homes. West Palouse and South Abb simply cannot support the type of congestion that an added one-hundred-and-sixty-plus car trips coming and going into the same entrance and exit every day would bring. There is not adequate infrastructure on these streets. There is no existing crosswalks or stoplights anywhere near this property to safely manage the increased traffic this rezon would bring. There are not even existing sidewalks for pedestrians to safely walk along portions of these roads, leaving children living in the neighborhood who are not provided city busing to school. Because of the one-mile proximity to Whitney Elementary, to walk or ride their bikes around cars parked on these streets, this issue would be made worse by approving this rezon going against the city's safe routes to school program. Again, please support planning and zoning's recommendation and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it that we've got. This is one last chance. If anybody's online wanting to speak, raise your hand, we'll give you a call.
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. And with that, before I close the public hearing, if there are questions for staff, why don't we do the...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I just had someone raise their hand.
Okay.
It's Julie Holvey.
Julie, oh, Julie Holvey.
Holvey, correct.
We should be able to hear you when you start.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. I first want to ask, I didn't testify at the planning and zoning, so am I eligible to speak here tonight?
Yeah. Right. Yes, so thanks for asking that, though. Really appreciate it. Yes, you are. This is not an appeal, so you are welcome to speak.
Okay. All right, my name is Julie Holvey. I live at thirty-seven oh-seven Nez Perce in Boise, Idaho, in the Vista Neighborhood Association area. Can you see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you. However, if you turn, if you turn the video on, you should be set up to be able to be seen.
All right.
Oh, but it looks like it's switching. Yep, now we can see you. Hi there, good to see you.
All right. So, I wish I had a better understanding of the tricks of the trade for development, but I will say what I will say. On the application previous to this one, which was CAR twenty-one triple zero eleven for eighteen thirty-three Vanel, your planner said they cannot support variance requirements to perimeter setbacks as this is new construction, that they would have to demonstrate hardships or unique circumstances. And I don't exactly know what you did with that application, but then, coming back to this CAR twenty-one triple eight twelve, this is a rezon. On the planning and zoning hearing transcripts, page three, line seven, it says, "Development agreement to which proposal is tied is for nineteen point two places per acre." And then continuing on page three, line seventeen, it says, "There is no planned unit development before you tonight." So what we are talking about is a rezon. There's been a lot of talk about the property and what the buildings may or may not look like, but where are we taking up a rezon time to talk about some possibly foregone conclusion that it has been rezoned? It has not. On page four, line, on page four, line twelve of that same document, PNC says, "While planning is generally non-supportive of rezoning," and they go on to say some other things, "but planning usually doesn't do rezones." Now, I also have some documents, I don't know if I'm going to have time to share them with you, and I'm a little awkward at this, but there was a Planning and Development Services pre-application conference in this packet, and it is not for the address we're talking about. It is for twenty-eight thirty-six Lemhi, a parcel of point four-nine acres. And then this evolved to be a different conversation about two-something acres and what might be built on it, but we haven't even gotten past whether you can rezon it or not. Zoning is there to protect the neighborhoods. As far as compatibility goes, this plan that we shouldn't even talk about is not compatible. To maintain the character of the neighborhood would be to build eight buildings of the R1C designation and make it beautiful. Everybody would say, yeah, let's absolutely do that. I don't think you'd have any objections, and you wouldn't have to do what I'm saying as a spot rezon. The, let's see, what else?
And Julie, I'm just, so you know, your time is up, so I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
One of them was sold for four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars and one for seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. I have those deeds here. I wish I could show them to you. I'm just not as prepared as I need to be, maybe right here. Well, I will read them. Deed of trust effective June first, twenty twenty-one by twenty-eight oh-one Palouse LLC. Property was sold for four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Julie.
Yeah?
I'm sorry, you didn't hear me about a minute ago. You've gone over your time, and I just needed you to wrap up with your final sentence.
Okay, my final sentence is, the second deed is a sale by Palouse twenty-eight oh-one Palouse LLC for seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. So, many of the concerns that we're having are very, very cogent and very legitimate, so thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do have one question for Julie. Julie, you still there?
Yes.
I take it from your last comment that part of your concern is that when these, you know, when the development is actually built, it won't be affordable, and that was a concern that I think the first person testified to today. And so my question to you is if this developer made a voluntary commitment to keep a certain number of the units affordable, say five percent or whatever it is, is that something that would change your thinking on this issue?
I don't think it would, no. I don't think that five percent of it is enough in the way of affordability. I think compatibility is what we're talking about here, and there's potentially eight people, or eight per acre, sixteen people, who could buy homes that they could live in for the rest of their lives, be it that they'll cost them four-hundred or five-hundred thousand dollars. It's not an issue that any of us can control.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. And we're actually, the applicant does have a rebuttal. Then after that, we'll check on questions for staff and then close the hearing. Hi, Steve.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Madam Mayor and council members, Steve Martinez, ninety-one sixty-five West State Street, Boise, Idaho, eight-three-seven-one-four. I just would like to, I do appreciate all the comments, both on the for and against side of this. I appreciate, I think we, as a developer builder in the valley, are trying to solve an issue. I think affordability is an issue. Where we put certain housing stock is an issue. The zoning, the layout, one of the things, I think we're in very unprecedented times with affordability across the whole valley. Report after report after report keeps coming out, and it's all a negative side of things. And so, we really are trying... And so we really are trying to work together with all of the stakeholders to come up with a product that is going to work in this for everyone. And part of the problem that we have, when we first looked at this property, we actually had the density a lot higher, and we started laying it out. We started putting drive aisles in and fire access. And how do we get to certain parts and pieces? We haven't finalized that. I want people to know that. I think there's been a lot of concern of layout and, you know, open space and garage space and drive aisles. Those things will be ironed out, and you guys will all have an opportunity to weigh in on that. But we have to get the ball rolling with the zoning. The LO part of this really was the tool in which we could use in going and buying so many parcels. We've done a ton of skinny homes in the valley, specifically in Boise, and I kind of would disagree with Mr. Kengas's statement that those are good-looking homes. There are, I've worked with several staff here at the city on all the issues associated with those. And we've tried to make the ones that we provided to the city something that we can be proud of, that we can put our name on, that don't, that aren't an eyesore five years, ten years, twenty years from now, that we're not stacking five bedrooms in each unit and just trying to get bedroom counts. And so I would just like to state, both for the neighbors, obviously for this group here, you know, this is our forty-first year building. We are born and raised in this valley. We have a vested interest in the, the name and reputation of the product that we put in this valley. And so we aren't here, and I appreciated the comments about the economics of the project, but that is a side note. And I don't want anybody thinking that economics is the sole driver of why we're asking for a rezon, because that is not a deciding factor for you guys to be looking at. So I am kind of rambling on. I just want, like I said, I want to let everybody know that we still have time in this process to iron out the details. Love the comments. I think those are things that we want to take. I've met with several neighbors. I want to take those comments and implement them into the project. Again, we take great pride in our name and our reputation, and it's kind of been insinuated that it's, you know, the profit is driving this, and we're just not driven by that. That is something that obviously as a business, we want to be profitable, but I think our name and reputation would say otherwise. So anyway, I will stand for questions. I don't want to get chopped off at the zero marker, so.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for your testimony. So question, when you started this process, I doubt that our affordability incentive ordinance was in place. And I wonder if you've thought about using it, I think part of, part of the concerns we heard tonight, despite the fact that at least one person said affordability wouldn't make a difference, is about affordability, and wondered if you'd thought about trying somehow to make affordability a part of this project. And, and in the case of our incentive ordinance, you could probably use an R2 and get to the forty units.
So Councilwoman and Madam Mayor, I have talked to Andrea Tunning at great length, even as we were talking about the affordable housing discussions way before it was implemented. The problem is it's not an allowed use in the R2 zone. So she and I talked about that, and you are not allowed to upzone in an R2. I thought the same thing. I
You're right.
called her and talked to her after PNC, and I said, oh, my gosh, please help me, you know, this is, let's talk about how we can make this project viable. And so I did look into that. I thought it was a great opportunity to be able to use that new ordinance. I talked to her months in advance of instituting the ordinance, of trying to find a way, so. It's a long answer.
I appreciate you reminding me that we, we did take the R2 out of it for a variety of reasons, but, but recognizing that we were probably going to lose some, some projects as a result. So I guess then, you know, to follow up on that, is there any other tool that you thought of to ensure that some of these units would remain affordable?
Yeah, Councilwoman and Madam Mayor, we actually, so part of this project does front onto Lemhi, and we looked at product types. I'm going to tell you this, there's a struggle with direction, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot tonight, but I think direction from the city has been a struggle for us. As we've sat down with the city, I feel like we've been given some direction, and when we come back, I feel like it's, we're given almost the opposite direction. And I think we've got a lot of tiptoeing on this. I think there's a lot of, and we're just trying, we're trying to get a solid answer from the city on what direction we should head with this. And I think this, our struggle is we've, we've been given a lot of, like I said, a lot of different direction on this, and people have changed and seats have changed. And anyway, it has been a little struggle there, so.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, are there questions for staff?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Process question. So this is a rezon. It's a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's not a decision. So this really is the decision, I mean, this is the first time it's actually a decision. Just wondering if there's any possibility that further discussion about some of the items that came up tonight before a decision was made might, might be fruitful in finding some assurance that people would feel better about the, the solution. And yeah, I don't know if you can answer that, but, but just trying to, trying to figure out, you know, what, what is the, something is going to get built here. And so process-wise, if we made a deferral, what, what would that look like?
Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, you can certainly defer this evening and provide the applicant feedback for some redesigns for that specific site plan that would be associated with the development agreement. You can add conditions tonight, or you could, if there is an agreement amongst the council, you could deny tonight with that feedback and showing support with a different zoning district.
Follow up if I might.
Bless you.
So either way, it's, it's our job to give further direction unless we're willing to approve it as is.
Council President, that is correct.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Selene, so just as I understand it, we can't approve a, a lower-density zoning and that, that they're not pursuing.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I I'm looking over at legal. I don't, I don't think you can.
I would, I would suggest, rather than asking legal from the bench, that if there are questions related to this, then looking into deferral, while that could be ascertained, would be more prudent. We, we try not to have our attorney weigh in on legal matters on the public record. Those are attorney-client conversations.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, Selena, I've got a question here. And it's really just about the definition of LO. So when I'm reading it exactly, it does, and somebody brought this up earlier, "A zone intended to accommodate office space in locations that are served by primary roadways but are inappropriate for commercial development because of the proximity to residential uses. The zone conditionally allows up to forty-three point five units per acre at a maximum of forty-five feet of height." So my question is, do we often, and have we approved or rezoned things to LO in the past with a residential use? And is that common and is that predictable?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Holly Burton, we, we do not usually rezon to office for residential use. I will say, however, many of our office zones, we have been seeing as with planned unit developments, conditional use permits, which usually don't come before the council. They usually go to Planning and Zoning Commission. And in fact, the same night that this was heard by Planning and Zoning Commission, there was an LO-owned property on Overland that was approved with a PUD for multifamily, or I believe that was townhomes, actually. Overland's an arterial, so definitely different area where this is certainly more internal to the neighborhood.
Madam Mayor, follow up. So just to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly, it's not uncommon if something's already zoned LO for us to incorporate residential use into it, but it is relatively uncommon for us to rezon something to LO and then incorporate residential use into it. Is that correct?
The, yes, that is correct. I would say, though, that our, our code is dated, and we are in the process of updating it. And so we're still working in the confines of, of the development code. It's just not maybe as predictable as you would have seen it, you know, ten, twenty years ago.
Sure, thank you.
Madam Mayor. So follow up to that. So although the zone is, is labeled limited office, it allows residential use as an allowed use within the zone.
As a, as a conditional use within the zone, and that's what would be required of the applicant if this rezon was approved tonight. There would be a planned unit development required. And if they couldn't meet the dimensional standards, then they would ask for waivers in that planned unit development. And if they want to subdivide it, then a subdivision as well. And I will note, Council President Clegg, you mentioned the activity or the affordable housing bonus earlier that is allowed in the LO zone, but not in R2.
Madam Mayor, let me follow up on that if I could. So if residential is a conditional use within an LO zone, rather than using the incentive to get more units, in this case, the incentive might be that making some of those units affordable is a desirable path forward. Or is the whole point, I mean, you know, maybe that's a question for the developers, the whole point of that, that you get more units?
Council President Clegg, that is, that was the point, is to incentivize more housing and, you know, you know, have unlimited density, parking reductions, increase to height. We would essentially be capping all of that with a development agreement attached, but I did want to just make that aware, make you aware that that, that bonus is allowed in the LO zone.
Okay, it looks like there are no further questions, so I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I'm ready to make a motion yet, but I would like to make some comments. I, you know, we're arguing tonight over five units. Essentially, you could get thirty-five units with an R1M, which is a residential zone allowed in this land use designation. And, you know, a lot of what we hear tonight is that it will be out of step with what exists in the neighborhood today, and because of that, it would be undesirable. I can tell you that I live in a neighborhood that has a forty-unit condominium building on less than an acre, about a block and a half from me, and that has a fourteen-unit apartment building titty-corner across the street from me. And it all works fine, in part because of design, in part because there isn't an expectation that every single building will be the same. On the other hand, this is an area that's zoned residential, says compact residential, and we're attempting to use a zone that isn't, while residential is permissible, that isn't designed for residential. In part, we're trying to do that because our zoning code frankly is deplorably out of date and needs updated, and we don't have a zone that, that offers what we might like to see in this area. On the third hand, we have a development that while each of the buildings may be very nice, doesn't do much to nod to the neighborhood in terms of, say, stepping down the front yards of the very front buildings or making some accommodation to show the neighborhood that it's not just all the same building. And so you know, given all of that, I, I feel like we have a project that is very close, but just not over the finish line, which is why I suggested that maybe a path forward would be further discussion. The other path forward would be to go with the recommended denial and ask the developer to come back with something new, but often that doesn't do anything but add time. So those are the things I'm thinking about.
Madam Mayor. Right before the Council President spoke, I was about to say, I'm not quite ready to make a motion, and then I thought she was going to make a motion and bail us all out, but I'm still not ready to make a motion. We have a project here that's right on the edge in a lot of ways. It's right on the edge of the permitted density. It's right on the edge of the zone that's being outwards, stretching to accomplish some goals. And we have a developer who's indicated a real openness to modifying and adjusting the design as they get closer in that process. And so to the Council President's point, it almost feels like a not-quite-baked cake. The objections that we heard from people testifying are concerns, well, the overwhelming concern is density, period. They're too, you know, this is too much for this space. And then these ancillary concerns about whether investors will hold the property. Some people felt it was ugly. I think that's an eye-of-the-beholder thing. And then affordability was the third. And so given that we have what feels like an edge case here, and we have uncertainty about what the final cake is actually going to look like, it's very difficult to justify, you know, why we land within bounds in that edge case, because there's not quite enough certainty. And that's not, certainly not a criticism of the applicant. I understand the process can bounce back and forth and, but what I wonder, if rather than going all the way back to the drawing board, rather than denying the application outright and then essentially leaving this property undeveloped in any way for some amount of time, which is contrary to all of our goals, if there's a way that we can defer our decision for some period of time, but whatever works with the schedule, I don't know if it's thirty days or sixty or whatever fits, in order to have some discussions with the developer, or at least get more certainty from the developer about what the deliverables are that would allow us to say, yes, this falls on the permissible side of that edge case. And I think the factors that the public is looking for across the city are affordability, continuity with the neighborhood, and, you know, a good, solid argument that that although what is going to be put here may not make everybody happy, it is at least consistent with the pattern of development in some clearly articulate ways that you can point to in the project you're planning to build. That way, it'll be less of a moving target, and it'll be a little bit less fear-inducing, frankly, among people who can't quite picture what's going to land there. So that's kind of my, my thinking and my thought. Is there a way for us to gain more certainty about what's coming by deferring without shooting everybody in the foot and having to start the whole process over?
Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I think I disagree with my colleagues a little. I, I do not think that this project at this zoning gives the neighbors the level of predictability that they should exist, they should expect. And it gives me concern that if we approve this zoning here, then of course it opens up the, the box to do it everywhere, because then we've set the standard. I, I think the density does not match the surrounding area. I don't think it's compatible, compatible in any way. I think we have a very, very good working developer, though, and I think that this should come back. I would, I would think at R2. But I think R1M would be possible if there was some cleanup, quite a bit of cleanup. I, I just do not believe that this gives the neighbors any sense of reliability and predictability. any sense of reliability and predictability in what they should expect from our city. And so I, there's no way I'll support this zoning regardless of what the project looks like.
Madam Mayor. So I'm not lined up with anybody at this point. And I'm going to explain my reasoning here. And I want to do it in a way that's really, really transparent. I'm not opposed to the density of this project. I understand why people are and living in a place for forty-five years. This is a big change. And I completely understand that one hundred percent. I've been in three meetings today about affordable housing, one that had to do with homelessness, one that had to do with housing for refugees, and one that had to do with housing for nonprofit workers. And so I know that the inventory is needed. And I don't think that it's necessarily a bad place for that inventory. But my personal beliefs up here are kind of one thing, and then interpreting code is a whole nother thing. And if I can look at something for LO that tells me that I think as a council member who'd been doing this for a little bit, not a long time, but a little bit, and that tells me that this is probably office space, it's very, very unpredictable for me as a neighbor to to see something go from R one to LO as an office space. And I think about our rewrite that we're doing, our zoning rewrite right now, that Council President Clegg brought up is absolutely necessary. And one of the things that we've discovered in that zoning rewrite with our consultant is that there is a level of distrust that exists in Boise for some of our land use decisions that's slightly more abnormal than some other cities. And I think sometimes it has to do with the zoning code that's there and the way that it's interpreted. And there's no way as a member of this community and as a neighbor that I could read that zone and really truly believe that that was predictable. Again, like there's a, there's, there's an R one M that's thirty-five units, you know, the the density isn't really the thing for me here because I'm fine with the density. It, but it is unpredictable to me if we look at it as an LO. And that's kind of a period for me. And so I don't think I can be supportive of a of a rezone or a deferral, just because I don't feel like that's a path forward. And I do feel comfortable making a motion if needed, but I would love to hear other thoughts as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you. Wow, it feels like everybody is trying their hardest to make this work. And so for that, I appreciate everybody's input. I lived in a tall skinny house. They're a wonderful product, but even though I lived in a tall skinny house near Boise State in the early two thousands, it was two skinny houses on one lot. And even with that, our neighborhood association was wary of us. And we were homeowners. And then after I lost my home to foreclosure in the last recession, I moved into a cute little house like yours that you showed off of Broxen. And I lived across the street from, I think it was four or five staggered tall skinny houses, but I think they're a little bit more like the product that that you're building. And there were no sidewalks, very narrow road. And I have never lived anywhere with more police activity in the five months that I lived on Broxen. And I broke my lease. I forfeited my security deposit to move into a duplex in the North End where I've lived for going on nine years. And it was shocking to me, the quality of life experience I had from living on Broxen to living on Bella, Eighteenth and Bella, where there was detached sidewalks and trees. And the the road was wide enough for two cars to travel. And it was shocking to me because I realized I'm not that far away from Broxen, but I'm a world away in terms of quality of life. And so I agree, we absolutely need need more housing. Our people are getting pushed further and further out of the central part of Boise. Just recently had a chat with a friend who grew up in Mountain Home, met a new family who just moved to the area, and they said, where'd you move from? Kuna. Why'd you move from Kuna? It's too expensive. And so for that reason, I'm very torn, too. We we need more housing. We need it to be affordable. But I also know what happens when we don't design our neighborhoods in a way that people feel some ownership over them. And I am a renter, just want to reiterate that. So it's it's not about being a renter. The reality is, as we continue, we're going to have more and more people in Boise who are renters because they're unable to purchase homes. So I hope we can eventually get away from denigrating renters. But I agree with most of my colleagues that I don't think we're yet, we're we're yet there, and that is why we are working on updating our our zoning code, because, you know, we're trying to force Cinderella's foot into a shoe that doesn't really fit yet. So that's where I'm at.
Madam Mayor. I'm actually ready to make a motion, and I have some reasoning for that. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion and move that we deny CAR twenty-one dash twelve, which was a rezone of approximately two point two three acres from R one C to LOD DA.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. And I, you know, like all of my colleagues, we recognize that we need more housing in Boise. I don't think that that's a question that's being asked here tonight. And I would like to see more housing here on this lot. And I'm going to give a little bit of context to what I think would be more appropriate. One of the things I think would be more appropriate is to use an allowed zone within the compact land designation. I don't think that in this neighborhood, with the context of the neighborhood, forcing in as much density as possible adds anything or is consistent with the neighborhood experience. I think that having a block of eight townhomes on a street frontage in a single-family neighborhood is likely going a little bit overboard, even for someone like me who loves density. And I just wanted to clarify on a comment that was made earlier that if we rezone this, it just gives the developer carte blanche to do whatever they want. This was actually a rezone that had a development agreement and design review. Those are two more steps that this project would have had to have gone through in order to gain approval. So there would have been no carte blanche. I was not concerned about that at all, at all. But I think, in addition, and Council Pro Tem Sanchez brought this up as well, this is a lot of the reason why we're rewriting our zoning code. And our new zoning code will be more form-based. And I think that that will really help a lot of these situations. It'll create better expectations around what we want to see in neighborhoods as far as the form of buildings, not necessarily related to residential density, but just what we want our neighborhoods to look like and feel like, so that we can have some predictability there. So for all of those reasons, I would love to see this come back to us with all of those things in mind. And thanks for listening.
Madam Mayor. I've been waiting for an opportunity to to take a run at answering my perspective on Council Halliburton's question, his concern with the labeling of the zone. You know, R one C allows eight units per acre. And so if this was going to be zoned LOD DA with a development agreement, limiting it to eight units per acre would effectively be R one C in many ways. And so to me, the label or the word on the zoning doesn't matter. It's what's going to be built there and what that development agreement is going to say. And so it wasn't a hard stop for me. The hard, the the place where I'd get to a hard stop is a clear picture of what's going in here. And this was my argument for deferral. I think we have a developer who's willing to work with us and who's willing to more clearly articulate what it's going to look like and feel like to be on that street or in that development. And that, when we're talking about continuity or predictability or consistency, you know, that's what counts. It's not the words in the zoning code. It's what we build, what people buy, and where people live. And so my argument for deferral, I think, recognized your concerns that we can't tell what's coming here. This word seems off, but I had hoped allowed an opportunity to get more clarity on what is coming, so that we could then compare that to the land use map. I'm not sure I'm ready to support this motion, because I think a denial is going to result in a big reset of the process. It has to come back as a different project, substantially different. And I'm not convinced that we can't get there with this one with the right combination of restrictions in the development agreement. And so in an effort to make that process happen more quickly, both from a staff burden perspective, from an applicant burden perspective, and then, of course, from a housing inventory burden perspective. That's why I was kind of angling towards a deferral to give us a chance to have more conversations about this.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Because I'd have to say I'm not ready to support a denial either. And it's not because I think that this project is ready to go as is, but for many of the reasons Councilmember Bajin just spoke about. But I think more importantly for me, this is an opportunity to really give direction to the developer, and I appreciate the motion, but didn't hear a lot of direction in that motion other than to come back with less density. And for me, the density really isn't the issue. The issue as I see it is, as you said, a eight-unit townhome fronting on this street without a break, without a height transition with a setback that's not consistent with the rest of the houses on the street frontage. A development that proposes five buildings that are substantially the same without any modulation or design characteristic differences is something that is inconsistent in many ways with single-family neighborhoods and the the design, eclectic design that most at least older, single-family neighborhoods have. In addition, for me, it is partly the fact that this reads like a very car-centric townhouse development, multifamily development that doesn't have clear sightlines or clear pedestrian circulation. All of those things contribute, I think, to the things that Councilmember Sanchez was talking about, which is a lack of ownership, whether you own the product or not, a lack of ownership over where you live in the neighborhood you live in, in the way that you're willing to act around your neighborhoods because of that feeling of ownership. And so for me, the those issues are the things that I'd like to see the developer work on. Developer already indicated a desire to figure out a way toward affordability. I'd be very excited if something came back to us that had an affordable component to it. And so for all those reasons, I continue to believe that that a deferral with direction might be a better course that would get us there quicker to some housing that we desperately need.
Madam Mayor, just a quick comment. I I appreciate everything that everyone said and the way that people interpret things in different ways. And while I do support the density in this area, Councilmember Woodings said something probably better than I did, and it was really had to do with the allowed use in the area. And that's really what I'm trying to get at when I talk about the LO is I want to make sure that even if my personal view is that we need the housing, it would make sense to be there. That if I'm a neighbor, and if I live in my community and I'm trying to interpret interpret blueprint Boise and what might be coming in next to my house, I'm really going to be planning and envisioning what an allowed use would be. And so I guess what I would maybe expect from a proposal, if they did come back, would be what was allowed in a use. And I do realize that the LO is technically an allowed use. I just don't think that that myself or our neighbors would interpret that as predictable. And again, I don't, I don't I disagree with the actual density part of it. I think that it works. But I want to make sure that I'm not behaving in an unpredictable way when I'm approving a development, you know, for our citizens. And so I would be looking for a proposal to come back that fit within allowed use in that area that was specifically speaking to residential and not office.
Madam Mayor. I'm gonna just comment briefly. I think that the Council President maybe articulated more directly the things I was trying to get at in an indirect way when I was providing indirect direction. So I apologize for for not being straightforward. But yes, I am worried about the massing of an eight-unit townhome fronting a street that's single-family residences otherwise. I think that the setbacks need to be more consistent. I think that there are ways to do this and still, you know, possibly get the good density without necessarily doing it in the way that was just proposed, potentially through accessory dwelling units. So if that is a little bit more direct, then that was my original intention. All right, I think everybody has spoken. So Clerk, is there anything else?
Please call the roll. Bajin.
No.
Clegg.
No.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Four in favor to oppose motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn.
The motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.